Not a ton of people right now, but it's mostly. It's it's good.
We can wait till you're ready.
Yeah.
It's not gonna take us a whole long time.
I don't think there's a cover. Do you want your do you want your PowerPoint or PDF?
Go ahead Keith and start.
Yeah.
Turn it over to Keith. He's gonna we're gonna talk about LID 54.
Throw a lot to Brett. Brett did the design on this, went through and canvassed the neighborhoods and did all the work. But so one of the discussions, so what we wanted to do is just bring the council, the full council, kind of up to speed. We did we did have a meeting with the Oversight Committee on the LID, just to get some input on that. And so on LID 54, if you remember the properties that we originally put on that, we had Birch Street, and then we had First South from Second West all the way to Fer- or to Center Street. And then we had First West from Main Street down to First South. So kind of that T there as well as Park Street on this one. And so one of the discussions we had, so on Birch Street, our primary concerns on Birch Street is it's just because it's on the hill, the cross slope on there, a lot of those driveways on the east side are fairly steep. And then the driveways on the west side are pretty flat, and there's some that actually drain back into the garage. So as we try and adjust the cross slope on the street, it becomes difficult. And the cross slope on that street was, what are we sitting at right now?
2.2 on the south end to like 4.6 on the north end. So normally, we're trying to keep them under 4.5 in places that already exceed that.
Yeah. And so anytime you get that bigger cross slope, right, as you're going up, cars have a tendency to wanna, when it's icy conditions, slide. And so those are those, that's why we try and keep it within those those realms. But everything and the and the road is fairly narrow. I think it's 30 feet of asphalt on there. And so that was one option we looked at was like, well, could we narrow the road up some to try and get that curb away from those driveways? Because once again, the sidewalks, the ADA requirements from the federal government, right, is you can't have any greater cross slope than 2%. And obviously, these were all put in, I think, in the 70s with that neighborhood, or 60s? And so they were all put right against the curb line. The driveway approaches are all well over that 2% cross slope. They're probably in the neighborhood of 5% or so. And so there's a lot of issues on Birch. And so that was the discussion was maybe what we should do on Birch is push it off a year and bring in the neighborhood and just kind of go over all the scenarios with the neighborhood and really kind of try and work with them. I know that I talked with Bruce Sutherland just today, and he's anxious to see his his street reconstructed because it is in poor shape. But but we felt like it would probably be good to just maybe set that for next year and have that kind of this early this spring, have that neighborhood meeting with them and kind of go over the different scenarios. Because one of the things we're looking at is a rolled curb. And a rolled curb gives a little bit more of an abrupt approach into the driveways, but it does help us with adjusting some of those cross slopes because it raises it up and then also with getting into some of those driveways.
Is rolled curb the curb, the kind where you don't cut out for a driveway because you can just go right up?
Yep. Yep. So you can have a driveway approach anywhere on it. So a lot of the new subdivisions, a lot of them will go with that rolled curb. So that way, they don't have to come back in after they put in the curb and and cut out driveway approaches. So we do see that a lot. It's a little bit harder of an entry, right, just because you're up on it. So some people really like it, some people don't. So we felt like that would be a good discussion to have with the neighborhood and then just kind of talk about all those and kind of get a feel, you know, what does that neighborhood want to see? And I know obviously, cost is a big issue as well. Unfortunately, there's not as many sewer lines. We're seeing that sewer line sewer service line repair. It's gone up substantially over the years. So we were estimating about 3,500 apiece on those, which is still cheaper than if they had to come back in and cut the asphalt and do it themselves later at a later date. But generally, if we're putting in a brand new road, we don't, we don't want to see that someone come in and cut that road. So we always want to do it early on if if we think that the sewer line, generally, I'm looking at Orangeburg pipe that because we see a lot of that start to fail.
So Keith, did Bruce, did you mention to him the fact that we might put this off?
Yeah.
And he would see, do you feel good about that?
Yeah, he was okay. He's still, he was like, is there a way we can do it this year? I was like, no, we probably need to have. But I think he was okay with it. I mean, he's been wanting to see that street reconstructed ever since he was mayor. So that's been a little while on that. So but I think I think that's a probably a good move to do is to to push that one off a year with all the different constraints that are involved with Birch. But then we can go down and look at the the other streets. And I think this one mainly is like all the ones on Birch, right? You get the separations, cross slopes. Right? So that was the one we talked about, but it was filled curve. So and and we'll come back and and talk about that. But I think with some of those, it's dropped down, but we're still, I think there's.
$1,450 basically is the average cost. The high was just under 20,000, and I think the low was probably right around that 4,300.
Was that with when we double checked on the 30% on the driveways?
No, no, I'll put that in. So I dropped it from that 15.6 to 14,400.
Yeah. Yep. That was to, if you recall, we did that policy where we're contributing 30%. And if they had a driveway that needed to be adjusted because of the ADA cross slope on it, which most of these up on Birch are, that we would participate 30% in that driveway as well. And so that's what we brought back in and lowered it a little bit on those with Birch. And then we looked at the different options. But I think we have enough money in there that we could do them all. And I think you had estimated, what was it, four? I think Matt said we had three to four million that we can spend on LED. But we're gonna end up with Birch coming off, right, with 2.5 roughly.
So Keith?
Just in just in thinking that is just streets, right? Because we've got sewer, we've got water, we've got other things that are gonna. So don't think of like when I bring you in a bid and it's like three and a half million, you're like, wait, we can't afford that. That's just just the street portion of that. But.
So if you, if there's enough money there to do all three of them, is there a project that we can bring forward from the next year?
Yeah. So one, one area that we we looked at, so there's an area, if you remember, on University that we didn't do a crabs on. So right by that new church that was going in, because they were bringing their water lines and sewer lines across. And so we wanted to wait on that. So that's an area that we could bring forward to do that. That doesn't have an, there wouldn't be any LID attached to that section. And if we do a a crabs project, because we were looking at potentially running, because we don't have the sewer line issues as well in Park Street, looking at doing that as a crabs project, right? That's where we pulverize the existing asphalt, reuse that as base, and then pave over it, kind of the projects we did this year. And so that that would be an area that we could do and kind of finish off that section of University. The other area that there's kind of a spot repair that we probably want to look at as well on Second South and Second East. We're seeing a lot of rutting happening right at that intersection where we're seeing the asphalt shove. And we've got some areas that are probably six inches in there.
Inches up there already.
So a couple of spots that we want to look at. Now, the interesting thing on that, we want to do, need to look at what's causing that because we did a crabs project on that several years ago. And to see that kind of move like that again, we're wondering, you know, is there water coming up through? Is there a shelf underneath it, a rock shelf that the water's migrating down and then coming up? So I don't, there's some things that we kind of want to look at with that. But those are a couple of extra projects that we could throw in there that would cause us to kind of do the LID portion or. So we have those other maps. So so I think you got, everyone has maps in front of them. That kind of shows the replacement and the curb and then as well as the costs that are associated to each of the property owners along there. There's some, obviously, Fifth West has some pretty high ones because we have some areas that just don't have any sidewalk, like stones. That whole side doesn't have sidewalk along it. One other thing that that came out of our our meeting was was that in the letter, we're gonna send out a kind of a pre-meeting, if you will, before they come to the council, just kind of a question and answer period with the the property owners. We'll try and do that. I think we had that set up for a week before the council, so March 12. So we just have a kind of an open house where the different property owners can come in and we can hopefully answer questions, talk about any concerns or comments that they have before they come to the city council. I thought that would be probably a beneficial meeting to have with that.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I know I was late.
No.
So Birch is the only one that we're talking about taking off, right?
Yeah.
And so all dealers run. And the average is 15,000.
You mean on all of them? Or that?
Yeah. Well, I mean. But what about the one like I was talking to you about? So the floods property?
The floods property.
15,000 for the one, and then right next to them is 10,000.
We have those numbers for the floods. That one we need to bring up. You want to come up?
Is it on the spreadsheet here?
Yeah, the spreadsheet. That way, that way, we can just bring up those.
Floods on Fifth West.
Yeah. So we have some some homeowners definitely on Fifth West, right, that that probably have some financial concerns, right?
Yeah.
So so I think I'm. So I think these ones are hard ones to do an average on. I don't, I don't think an average gives you a a good picture because we have some that are really high. And so it's gonna skew your your average.
Like stones, right?
Yeah, like stones. I think that one is showing, what, 70,000 on there now? Let's look at the the floods. So the floods are the one is the house that is right on the corner of.
Yeah. So 15,000 and 11,000 for, you know, that's one family. I just, I don't, I don't know how anyone else feels, but I just, I can't feel right about a bill like that for one resident. It's just staggering for some people. And I understand that you can put the lien on their home and but I don't know, does does no one else have a problem with 15,000 for one resident, especially a person on a fixed income? You know, a single person? I just, I guess I I struggle with that.
I mean, we all feel bad about that. But what what do you suggest? You mean, like, we participate more for that single individual?
Oh, well, I mean, I've already, I Keith has heard me lots of times. I I disagree with the way we do LIDs. And I've already made that clear. I I think we could move towards doing something that isn't such a burden on residents, the part of our city budget. It's a drop in the bucket for our entire budget, the parts that the residents pay. I think we could move that. I know I'm the only one that feels that way. But I just, I personally cannot. I just have an issue with 15,000 for one resident. It's just.
Yeah, it's a, it's a pretty high bill.
That's really high.
What 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 residents were paying five years ago was probably more in the neighborhood. What did you say? Probably 5,000?
Yeah, it's doubled, right?
And and it's probably gonna be higher if things keep going the way that they're looking. By the time we actually have the final assessment, it might be even more than this. I just.
Hopefully, we're high. But but no, you're absolutely right. We could see higher, higher numbers than what what we've estimated. I mean, we try and take what what was last year's and look at quantities and say, is there a discount for quantities? Or what do we think we're gonna see on that? Some of it plays around in, are we doing the full curb? Does the sidewalk sit against the curb? If you can do a curb machine, generally, you can get a little less expensive than handset curb. So lots of different things play into it when we kind of do our estimate. But you're right, until we have a contractor on board that says, here's what I'm willing to do it for, our estimates are just estimates.
Yeah.
So do we have any latitude there? I mean, is it by ordinance that the percentages?
Yeah. So it's a policy, right?
It's not an ordinance. It's a policy.
Right. And so it'd be adjustment.
It's not by ordinance?
No, it's a policy. We changed it a few years ago. We started paying a standard amount for everyone because before that, it was.
Well, I think we always kind of paid a standard amount, but we switched it to a percentage because we would.
Well, that's what I mean. It was, it was not, you know, some people's bill was 10,000. So the percentage that we paid was less for them than someone who, there's was less. So we tried to standardize it.
Yeah, it was, it was based on linear foot of curb and gutter and square foot of sidewalk. We had a certain amount that we would contribute to it. And as the cost went up, escalated, ours weren't moving with that. And so the council opted to say, well, let's look at a a percentage. Then that way, if it goes up higher, we're still picking up, right, that same percentage that goes across the board. So I think that was a good move to try and equalize it out. And so it'd be a a policy. And we also did the policy where when we were narrowing up a road, right, because the city saw a benefit to that over a long term, that we we would pick up 50% of that. And that, we only did that on Park Street. That was the only street that wanted, willing to go with that extra benefit from the city to pay for that 50%. The other neighborhoods, and there's other areas where we weren't looking to narrow roads. So so we didn't have that 50%. But but yeah, we have a policy in place, 30% curb and gutter, 30% sidewalk. And then if we're narrowing up the road, we do a 50% on that. And so, yeah, so there is some areas for, open for discussion, absolutely, to talk about, you know, what what percentages do we want to look at with that if we keep the same percentages? I mean, obviously, as we move percentages around other prior LID participants, right? So there's other issues, but obviously, as our costs escalate, right, there's, there's issues that that come with that as well.
I wonder if just adding to the policy, something for hardship. So if the income qualify, you can discount their percentage 50% or whatever.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, the county has a.
Could do individual property owners that have a financial hardship and that qualify for the hardship.
Yeah. I mean, I think that definitely a thought to look at is say, because I mean, there's, there's things out there and Noah's looked at, there's some grants out there to help him with the loan on that. But I can't remember, what was it, Noah, that?
So there's $10,000 grants and also a $40,000 loan, 4% interest, but it's for very low income. And so most of the people that actually come in and say, oh, can't afford that, they actually have higher incomes than they would be, would be able to fall back for it.
Do you know what the income is on it?
So it depends on the household size. And so we're offering vouchers, up to $9,000.
Say it again.
Up to $9,000 for for two people.
You have to make less than that?
Is that federal or state, this grant?
This is a federal program.
Federal grant?
U.S. state.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's not like, you know.
It's something.
Yeah, yeah, it's something. It's just some people might have a hardship that don't qualify for that, too.
Yeah. And so that that could be a discussion, obviously, with the council will say, you know, is there a threshold they want to look at? I mean, obviously, the county, I think, has some, some things where they help out residents when, I think, on their income taxes, if I remember right, not income, I mean, their property taxes. Yeah.
Well, I think we need to have.
Am I looking at that?
Yeah, I think we need to look at that. And before that, I mean, I, I know I'm only one person, but I'm not gonna be able to vote yes on that 15,000 for for that. I just can't do it. So.
Well, I'm curious about the numbers, too. For example, it says the cost, and maybe I'm just not doing it because I'm not a math guy. But like, for example, on that top one, Sarah Ivey, it says that the cost 11,166, and then you go over to the estimated property owner cost, and it's 11,155. So that's a whopping $11 off, $10 off, because I gotta pay 92 cents as well. If it's 30% down, I guess, I'm not sure how the math is calculated. Or am I just not understand, I'm not understanding the the spreadsheet?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. So what you have here is the total cost, right? That cost is based on the quantities that we see in the field, right? I go out, I survey every single property. I say, this, this curve meets the spec to come out. I'll mark that. Same with sidewalk, you know, for various reasons and conditions. Some of that that we participate in does not include their driveways or their aprons, right? So the city policy is that we're gonna participate on the ADA pathway. And so that's the sidewalks. So if you have a disproportionate amount of driveway that needs to come out, right, like we're adjusting the curb or removing it or or the aprons in that condition, and I need to take that out to get in the sidewalk, we're not participating on that. So that's where your hard cost is coming from right here. And then engineering is a is a fee. So we add engineering on there, and then we minus out their participation based on which ones qualify for them.
So essentially, so that's, so the 30% off is basically canceling out the engineering cost, which is why those other two costs are pretty much.
Well, if you, if you look down here, right, you know, this one, they get a much better discount, right? So you're looking at one where it's 10, this one's $700. So, you know, the engineering's a set percentage. And then the other ones, you know, just, it's all based on where the bag concrete's at, you know? And if it's, if it's in your driveway, and your driveway can have a substantial quantity of non-qualifying concrete, that's gonna skew their percentage. And if they don't have concrete there at first, you know, if it's new concrete, the city doesn't participate on new concrete because that's the whole cost for anybody for the first time.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And maybe what we could do is look at like cost for that first council. I mean, that gives us two weeks. We could sit down with Matt and see if there is a, an income threshold that that might work. And I don't know if maybe if we have some council members that would want to sit on that discussion before we bring it. But maybe that could be an option is to talk about that, that first council, because you need to get, obviously, you need to mail these out, get the people notified, things moving along that line. But in conjunction with that, we could look at that, that first meeting. And and I don't know if we'd want to do a work meeting. Is it, do we have a work meeting going on that? If that would be good for everyone, just to sit down and kind of talk through that? I don't know what everybody's kind of appetite is for that. But I think that's.
I think it'd be a good discussion.
It'd be a good discussion.
And it'd be great to have Matt or somebody that can help us through the numbers, seeing as I have amazing math skills. It would be very, that would be very, I, I think it's a great idea. I'd like to take a look at it, yeah.
Can we do that? Can we set that up? Can we set that on the agenda?
Yeah.
So what do you need from us, Keith? Do we need to set the public hearing for the 19th? Or should we hold off?
No, I think, I think we should do the public hearing so we can get that moving forward. I mean, there's always, we can always, as a council, right?
Move it back.
Discussions can go on and and different things can come up, right? If policies change, if we want to make adjustments there, we can, we can do it midstream. I don't think there's anything that that stops it. This just gets it moving. Those numbers are are estimates at this point, and those can always, the different facts and figures in there can can change based on what decisions the council wants to make. So I don't see that being an issue.
So everybody's good for the fifth, then?
So we have a work meeting before city council?
Like 5:30?
Yeah, I think we'd want, probably want an hour on that, so 5:30.
5:30?
Yeah.
A good list for everybody?
March 5.
Okay. So do I have a, we need to set a public, uh, set March, set the public hearing for March 19? Do I have a motion to set the hearing for March 19?
We need to approve Resolution 202501.
The Resolution 202501.
Why are we doing this now and not in a council meeting? Do you know why?
I just want to do, we need to do now. So do I hear a motion to set the public?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
Okay. We have a motion, motion by Councilmember Chambers. Do we have a second?
All second.
Second by Colin Erickson. Any more discussion? On favor?
I can I just say?
Yeah.
Sorry. I just wanted to say that this is, you know, this is just the public hearing. So if, you know, we don't get it all figured out.
Always changing.
Yeah. Always change.
So we can advertise the public hearing?
As I understand, you'll, you'll have that meeting with the property owners before that?
Yeah, we're still planning on the 12th. So that's the Wednesday before. So we'd have this work meeting before even that meeting, right? And then we'd have that meeting on the 12th, so that next Wednesday. And then the, is it the?
Okay.
The 12th? Is that right? Okay. So the 12th and then the 19th. So I guess that's how we'd go. Yeah. So that, I think, I think that gives some time that we can have that discussion.
So we have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, pass this. Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Yep. So now we're right into our city council meeting. Welcome, everyone. I don't know why everybody's here. Yes, I do. And I think some of those high school students in the back probably have a project.
A few Rammels out there.
Project to do and.
Yeah.
The most exciting time you'd probably spend in your whole entire school year. So I'd like to welcome the Rammel family here. Like to start our meeting every week, and we start our meeting with a prayer and a and a pledge. Call.
Sure.
Councilman Reese, will you lead us in the pledge?
The pledge, sure.
Us, Councilmember Colin Erickson will get us opening prayer, and then Councilmember Reese will give us a, will lead us in the pledge.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are thankful for the opportunity to be here and to be able to be in this great state of Idaho and be able to be in this great city. Father, we're thankful for the many blessings that come from living in this community and for the many great people that live here and the friendships we have. Father, we ask the blessing be upon this community and that we may continue to prosper, that we can continue to have the things we need. Please bless us as we meet this evening, that we may be able to discuss and go over things and be able to act in the best ability that we can. Please be with each and every one of members of our community, especially ones that need blessings and watch over them, bless them and help them in the things they need. Please be with us, we ask, and guide us and direct us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Can you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. Mayor is out of town. He's traveling with to a thing down, for the city down in Texas, and he, so he's not here, so I'll be not in the meeting tonight. Now, Anna, we need to roll call the council members.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember C Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember E Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Easter.
Here.
Council President Walker.
Here. Okay, we have a full, a full quorum. Now we have a special time here. We're going to have the appointment and oath of office for our new city attorney, Spencer Rammel. He wants to come forward, and like to welcome his family here and all those that are here to see this happen. Our Lady Clerk, Deborah Lovejoy. Give him the oath.
May I speak to me? Aye, speaking to you.
Aye, Spencer Rammel.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of city attorney.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of city attorney.
Of the city of Rexburg according to the best of my.
Of the city of Rexburg according to the best of my.
Congratulations.
Earlier today, we had a open house for Stevens Ollinger, our retiring city attorney, and we had a good turnout. We'd like to thank him for his many years of service. He's going to make it officially and turn his key over.
It's all your headache, brother.
Steven was with the city for 32 years and saw a lot of change, and served under a lot of, what was it, five mayors and four or five city clerks, three fire chiefs, three police chiefs, and numerous, I don't know how many council members. Yeah, I don't even know if he knows how many council members. So he had a big impact on, on the city and where it's at today, and I think the residents of Rexburg and our, and the city is far better off because of what Steve Zollinger did for us. So I'd like to give him a round of applause. I'll turn the time over to Spencer.
Thank you, council members. I appreciate you and this opportunity. About three or four years ago, a local attorney asked me, and this was long before it was discussed, if I would, or I was invited or approached about replacing Steve. They asked me, that attorney, who's going to replace Stevens Ollinger for the city? And I said, I don't know, but whoever it is, I feel bad for that person. And of course, life has a way of working out, and that person is me. I have been reminded numerous times today and in the, the weeks that I've been here since January 2nd, the big shoes that I have to fill. I think it's appropriate, though, to acknowledge that there's multiple shoes. One is his capacity as an attorney. The other is his capacity to care, and that's the bigger pair of shoes to fill. Nobody cares more about the city of Rexburg and its people than Stevens Ollinger, and he's done that for 32 years. And so I'd invite everybody to give him another round of applause. Quickly, I just need to acknowledge a couple people. And again, I plan on being here a long time, and you won't hear this from me again, and so I'm going to take just a minute of your time and acknowledge just a couple people that have been very important in my life. With a new opportunity, the hardest part is leaving a good people, and I'm leaving a really good place, Madison County Prosecutor's Office, who has a really good leader in Rob Wood, and I'm thankful for him, and he and I, to say the least, we have had an interesting. It was an interesting few years, and I'm proud of the work that I did on behalf of I'm sorry. Quickly, I need, but Rob and his office were awesome, and they continue to be awesome. Since I've been here, we have fantastic people at the city. I need to specifically say that in the last six weeks that I've been here, Matt Nielsen, Keith Davidson, Deborah Lovejoy, Terry Hill, have, I've spent far too much time in each of their offices, and they have made the transition very easy, and I look forward to continue to work with them. Rexburg means the world to me. My first rec lead game was at Adams Elementary in a Rexburg rec, red and blue beanie. My first job was with Duffy McFarland over at Teton Lakes. My first legal job was with Rexburg City refereeing basketball, where I wasn't paid under the table. My, the first time I was interrogated by the police was by Councilman Colin Erickson, trying to figure out which one of my friends pulled the plug on the buses. And I want you to know, for the record, I still have no idea who did it. But whoever did, I'm sure they didn't think it was going to implode and cause as much issues as it did. And so Rexburg and its people mean a lot to me, and I'm grateful for this opportunity. I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve, and again, there's big shoes to fill, but more than anything, gratitude on my part to be able to do it. I have a lot of family here, my wonderful wife, Ashley, my three boys, my siblings, their spouses. We all came back to Rexburg, and there's a reason. I'm grateful to be here, and thank you again.
Just on a side note, Stevens Ollinger is homegrown, and so is Spencer Rammel. So I don't know how many cities around have, there're probably, there're two city attorneys back to back are homegrown, so that's kind of an advantage we have, I think, because it shows what Rexburg is all about, and I know they both love, love the cities we do. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you, and we wish Steve good luck. Keep him under your wraps, Carrie, you know, one people top their head once in a while. So. Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our private presentation by the five-year Project 24 progress and plans for the 2025 build season. Turn time over to Silverstar.
All righty. Thank you, council members, for having us here today and to present. We're excited to share with you our 2024 successes and also talk about 2025 and finishing up this project. One of the changes you'll have this year is I've actually changed positions, and I'm going to be turning over the future build of this actually to Jason Jenkins. Jason Jenkins has been with Silverstar for almost 20 years, and so he comes with lots of experience, and will take care of you as we move forward, so.
Yeah, good evening, council members. Guess we're dismissing the mayor tonight, so we'll look forward to that one next time, city administrators. Everyone's here tonight, so representing Silverstar and everything under the Light Bridge brand, as far as engagement here with the city of Rexburg. First things first, we're super excited, right? The master plan is coming together, super excited about that. I get a chance to oversee all of our future open access builds, wherever they may be, so we are in a position to do a lot of engagement opportunities to hopefully bring the same, you know, access to broadband. We believe that Internet's not created equally, and that there's a big mission now to recreate this industry and bring acceptable broadband, bring choice, you know, close the digital divide and everything we hear, and we're super excited to be part of that. So anyhow, I'm Jason Jenkins, I'm the new VP of Open Access. I'm an Old Star Valley boy, grew up, raised there, so definitely well within this region for a long time, worked with a number of other cable telco operators over the last 20-plus years in the industry, so lots of involvement, lots of experience. So jumping right in, just want to make sure we give you some relevant updates here. All right, just kind of closing out 2024 here, just wanted to provide some relevant updates to the council, and we'll give you an opportunity at the end of the slides to ask any questions that you might have. So this is a great visual map. It tracks all of our kind of customer engagements as far as multi-phase process that we engage them from the initial sign-up to becoming a completed order to having been constructed, both the main line down their roads and then the drop service that comes into their home. We kind of have different status and pinpoints for that, so you can see the entirety of the city boundaries there. Within those limits, you'll see completed homes, which would be mostly on the far west side, which was focusing on a lot of the build for 2024. We recognize different areas, subdivisions those would be within. And then you'll see a number of other statuses of people that have expressed interest or that are in some phase of fulfillment. So this does a nice overlay to kind of show that. There are some numbers, you know, as of year end, we kind of tally everything up from a construction standpoint. There's over 208,000 feet of main line that's in the ground now, over 2,200 passings, which would be serviceable locations within those areas, all the homes, businesses, MDUs. To date, as of Jan. 1, there was over 520 homes that had active service that are receiving this connection right now and have selected. We have even a little visibility on some of the selections they made for bandwidth service. You can see that we're definitely fulfilling that. We'll jump into that. So anyhow, yeah, we still see, you know, need for additional engagement based on the total number of homes passed and residents that are here. I said over nearly, nearing 1,400 total sign-ups that have expressed interest. We'll be engaging a large group of those this year, obviously, as we extend the residential build out. And then we're seeing a fairly high take rate, or at least that, you know, when you average it out across all the development subdivisions that have been constructed so far, the average of that is 40%. So that's, you know, I think that's right on target with what was hoped and desired as far as that initial point. We see additional growth in that over time. People will, will hear the message later, oh, what are you doing? You know, neighbor talking to neighbor, whoever, and then we'll get additional sign-ups over time, even in areas that have already been constructed. So, and out of another point of interest, the highest take rate we've seen in any specific development to date, 63%. So definitely seeing the value and the benefit from the broadband improvements in their This is that distribution of customers, so you kind of tally these up against different groups. These are the services, right? This is the bandwidth subscription across the choice of internet service providers. Clearly, the dominant is the one gigabit symmetrical service. That's the new gold standard. Everybody wants a gig, right? And we're seeing that come to reality here as well. We're seeing those subscriptions across all ISPs, they all offer that package. And then the distribution amongst the other ones, we still see a growing number, over 19%, that are saying, hey, we, we kind of favor the more of the multi-gig subscriptions, so they're requesting even more bandwidth. And, you know, based on our assessments, over 72% of the customers that have subscribed here across those packages are receiving speeds on fiber optic infrastructure that are higher than can what be received on any other provider, right? Be that cable, DSL, point-to-point wireless, all the other competitors. So I hope that you're getting the feel from your residents, too. I hope they're excited about this, and I hope they are having a great experience. We're seeing positive reviews, you know, on customer surveys, engagements. We're seeing it. I hope that everyone else is seeing it as well. So that's kind of a wrap-up of 2024, now going into this next build year for 2025 construction plans. We've got some areas that we've laid out that helps us just to define different groups. And then we've each, you know, they're all identified and labeled, both by name, number, color. So this is a great visual to kind of look at everything east of the railroad tracks, if you will, that we'll be engaging in. Some of this, we had some preliminary construction on completed, or preliminary engineering design that allows us to proceed with some construction right of way. And so we'll be jumping on those opportunities first as we continue to finish engineering, final engineering for each of these build areas. We can't always guess Mother Nature, but we're hoping to start construction again in the city of Rexburg by the 1st of May, if weather permits. So there's not necessarily a specific timeline on these, only that they're all-inclusive as of now in our 2025 plans. As you know, there are some, some other construction challenges, things up on the hill, you know, things with other rock and everything, so we're working directly with city engineers. We're working through those finalized plans in order to, in every effort, meet our construction timelines. So there are some things you would identify here within kind of these different areas that are identified, which, you know, kind of label that as the hill, east of the railroad. This is the next group, south of the temple, which would define these different developments, Crestview, Crest Haven, Valley View. I don't necessarily have to read them all, but you have this in your packet as well to kind of define these areas, different groups. So let's see, we covered all those. So, yeah, like you said, did I say May 1st last time? Okay, so we have got different areas in Wyoming. That's going to be May 1st, because we know that's delayed, sorry. So it is an April 1st target here. We believe in eastern Idaho, based on early spring, if temperatures rise, we can get back, back in the ground, get rid of any frost or whatever. So anyhow, update that, scratch the last one. So 1st of April, we're targeting, you know, all the way through the end of October's typical construction season, and like I mentioned previously, we are targeting to complete the remaining residential build that we originally had committed to when we first started this project. We defined what that build area was, what was inclusive, and so we're intending to complete that barring any unforeseen circumstances. So, but we are, as an additional commitment, there are additional, you know, developments and things that are happening, so we're equally committed with those developers to get infrastructure in there as they open those trenches and get them inclusive of the total city build, even though that's outside of our commitments to you. We want to make sure that the city, you know, inclusively is recognizing this benefit in this broadband network, so. Okay, well, that wraps up kind of those high-level slides and updates we wanted to bring before the council, so I want to thank you for your time and. the council, so I want to thank you for your time and solicit any questions that you might have. And I brought a supporting group with me of other representation of people that will work here all the time and provide those more weekly level updates with city officials going forward.
Do you have any questions? I just know I think it's gone pretty well, pretty smooth. I don't think there's very many complaints that Todd gets at all. It was really pretty smooth, so I want to thank you for your good work and for your commitment to the city.
Absolutely, we're happy to be here, look forward to more, to finish this out and other future engagements, so.
Thank you very much.
You're sure welcome.
Okay, we'll move on now to public comment. This is the time that public can comment on items that are not on the agenda. I'd like to like you to set your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody here that would like to, your public comment? Anyone online?
We do have several people, but no kind of questions.
Okay, then we'll move on to item 7, 7A, our committee reports. And we'll start down here with council member Colin Erickson and move on down the line.
We did not have a airport board meeting or the golf board meeting, they was, both was canceled. Only thing from the school district, a lot of things going on with state and going, we had the girls' basketball go to state, the boys played their first game last night and won in districts, so hopefully they go. And then we have a lot of other things going on with the arts and the music over there. Seems like busy times getting going in the spring, so that's what's going on with the district.
Thank you. That's Ryan Johnson.
Yeah, our trials, I think it's April, we'll meet again, and then beautification, we'll probably have something coming up in the spring, but not quite yet.
Okay, and I got to report the those youth advisory council, they haven't met and they don't, we want me to get until March, first part of March, and then the ADA Oversight Board has not met, so. Councilmember Chambers.
Let's see, let's start with MEPI, that's the Madison Economic Partners Initiative. We continue to meet, in fact, we're planning a donors dinner in the spring where we recruit members to the board, and a lot of that will be based on contribution. We're also looking at, as part of our outreach for economic development, we've got what's called some soapbox mailers. Technology is such that we can put a video mailer together and send that out to targeted industries that might be interested in Rexburg. We'll do probably an initial mailing of about 100 of these mailers, see what kind of success we have with them, and then make decisions based on that. So MEPI is doing well, cultural arts, we continue to meet, we've got some issues we need to probably discuss as a council related to what they're calling program or production, production fees. So if you have a production that comes in and they don't have the money to rent the facility each night, is there a way that they can pay a fee that buys them a block of time that gets them into the facility and doesn't bankrupt them? So we've got that issue that's being looked at. What else have I got? I've got urban renewal, we're meeting some interesting things happening with urban renewal, but I'll delay discussion of that for another meeting. Historic Preservation Committee met last month, but I was not able to attend, but they meet again this month, and I'll be at that meeting, so maybe another meeting I can report on that as well. I think that's it, council president, thank you.
Hi.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Do you know when, is it going to be on a future agenda to talk about those production fees that you brought up?
Yeah, initially, we talked about that as part of the budget process, but if it has to occur sooner, then we'll need to set up a time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember.
All right, Carrick. Yeah, just briefly, there's continuing ongoing discussions about the Teton River Park, the construction. I think they're about ready to go out to bid on the south part of the park, so I think we should see some things happening there this spring and into the summer for the construction of that, of the Teton River Park. And some ongoing discussions about the long-range possibilities for the rest of that park, the north, the north part of that. And that's all that I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese.
Yeah, we haven't met lately with the Legacy Flight Museum, so there's no news there, but of course, we've been working hard with the police on our committee and we've got some movement there as we've approved as council the, hopefully, a potential builder. And tonight, we'll also be looking at architects for a possible new police facility, so that's moving, moving right along. So, yeah, we'll talk more in a little bit.
Nice to see that moving along, so. Okay, we'll move now to our staff reports, finance, our finance officer, Matt Nelson, you're up.
Okay, I've got quite a few things tonight, so I do apologize, it might take a little bit here. So we do have your monthly finance reports in there. I'm not going to specifically hit any one topic, but, you know, we, we're four months through the fiscal year, about 33%. We, on our expense side, we've spent about 18.4% of that. That's pretty typical this time of year because you'll see a lot of the construction start, you know, in May. But if I was to pull anything out of that, you know, a couple of things that are probably of interest to you is, as you look through the fund balances and the investments, we are building up the Police Impact Fund and then that, that potential police building fund. And so as you look at those two, you add those two together, let's see where we're at, you're basically about 2.2 million that we have saved up so far there, and we'll continue to grow that, so. And then, other than that, the only other thing I'll note is just your cash and investments. We won't pull that report up tonight, it's in your packet, but we're investing with cash and investments, we have about 50 million in the portfolio. We are still continuing as those investments come up. We're having to take a really pretty close look at if we can reinvest those because we have so many sewer and water projects, more so sewer, really. And so as we look at that, we just kind of analyze those capital improvement, future needs in the next year or two, but if we can, we're trying to reinvest those kind of in that two- to three-year timeframe and lock it in kind of at about 4.5% return, which is awesome for another three years, and so. So anyways, that's the finance report. Are there any specific questions on that, or should I move to the next item?
I think, go ahead, I don't think anybody has any questions.
Okay, all right, so the next one is two budget adjustments. We received two different grants and we'll hit, let's hit this, yeah, do the LTAC one first. So what this is, this LTAC one is for a project on Second East, and it's from Yellowstone, so where you turn to go over towards Sugar City and then up towards Walmart on Moody Road there. And what we would do is we would look at certain portions of that section, road widening, lights, and then where needed, potentially some sidewalk improvements as well. The total grant, or the total project is about $2 million. We do have a match of about 7.34%, but we do have carryover funds that we've saved up to be able to pay for that match out of that fund. And then the other thing to keep in mind is this year, we're just asking for a budget adjustment for really the design, engineering part of it right now, to figure out what that project looks like. And then next year, we would be putting about 1.85 million in the budget, so 2026. So that, that is an LTAC grant, and then I'll just hit the other one real quick.
That's just a pass-through, right, basically? This is just like a pass-through?
Well, no, we would, I mean, we would actually pay for it all upfront and then we would get a reimbursement.
Okay.
That's the way that would work. And then the other one is a Department of Energy grant, and this one is specifically for equipment and software for our traffic signals. So we would be able, it would allow us to basically monitor and network our signals through the fiber system that we've installed, which is, which is great, because it could, you could find out, you know, when you're having issues with your traffic signals a little quicker. I think it would help Joel and others that work on those signals significantly. So this one, the total cost, we believe is going to be right close to about 85,000. This grant's for 76,280. And so we are looking for a budget adjustment of both those and your approval to move forward with both those tonight.
Can I just? Excuse me, will the, will the construction on this happen this year?
So the, the construction of the first grant, no, it's going to be just more design.
No, I mean, this.
All the, yeah, so they would go out, and that's my understanding, right, Keith, is you would go out on the traffic signal and buy that software and try to install that this year?
Yeah, they've, they've still got a few signals that we need to connect with the fiber, but we're working through that. Yeah, the idea and help would be at the end of this year, we have those connected.
And we know that we're going to be able to have these funds, these federal grants with some things being.
Yeah, I think so on this one.
Okay, all right.
I'll talk about some other ones when I.
Okay.
Do we do these together, Lou?
Yeah, you can do them together.
I had a question, maybe Keith, you can answer this. On the LTAC grant, does that project include the right turn lane?
Yes.
Off Moody or off Second East?
Well, it's the center turn lane, but yes, we'll have the, sorry, not the right turn lane up on Moody, but a center turn lane down at the south where we can neck down to just four lanes, we don't have that center turn lane. We did apply for another grant for that, we haven't heard back on that yet.
That's the dedicated right where Walmart is? Okay, thank you.
Keith, in that same, with that same grant, you're talking about sidewalk, just on the one side of the street? The west side of the street would not have, is that included in this?
Well, we'll see how far the 2 million gets us on that, if we can get it on the other side, we'll try to do that, but, but the 2 million will, it's not.
I mean, that's, that's a lot of, that's a lot of sidewalk.
There is quite a bit of sidewalk that we installed through urban renewal not long ago on the east side, but there's definitely some sections where I think you walk in the road, right? And so, so we'll be looking at all that.
Okay, so I entertain a motion to accept these budget adjustments.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the budget adjustments for both the LTAC Safety Grant and the, what is it, the EE CBG?
Yeah, Department of Energy Grants.
Grant for traffic signal system synchronization.
I have a motion by councilmember Chambers, do we have a second?
I second.
Seconding by councilmember Reese, any more discussion?
I have several more questions, I'm sorry, this is probably a really dumb question, but if something happened so that we didn't see those federal funds, are we out any of our matching money?
Out, no.
Okay.
No, we wouldn't, basically that's just match goes in when we.
When you get the funds, okay.
Given the current environment, that's a non-question.
That's what, I'm just saying, I don't know that we can rely on this right now, so.
Okay, any more questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes.
Okay, I think the next item is the approval of an architect for the police station facility. So you guys are familiar with our, I don't think we have anything in there. So you're familiar, there was eight committee panel, I guess, selection committee, and then, of course, we had our two attorneys in there as well. So there's really 10 of us providing input. We actually had six different firms respond as architects. We reviewed those on paper, we narrowed it down to three, we interviewed three, and then after the interviews, we were making the recommendation to work with Hummel Architects, and then they also have another firm called KMB Architects, where they basically brought a public safety specialist, you could call it, in to work with them. Hummel is, they do have an office in Idaho Falls, so they're fairly close, and we just, we just felt like they would be a good company to work towards a contract on, and so we are recommending to work with them on that contract.
Okay, any questions for?
Okay, so we're just looking for your approval to work towards that contract.
Okay, so I entertain a motion that we approve the.
First of all, thank you to those that were on that committee, that's a lot of work, thank you for that. We didn't have to do that, you did, so thank you. But, Mr. President, I would move that we approve the architect for the police station facility to Hummel.
Yeah, Hummel and K, with KMB.
As recommended by the committee.
Okay, I have a motion by councilmember Erickson, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconding by councilmember Johnson, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes.
Okay, I will notify them and we'll start working on a contract. We haven't seen a contract back yet, just an update on, on the other one from Headwaters, they're aware and they are working on that contract, so. Okay, the next item, so I'm going to kind of, I'm going to hit maybe two, maybe three things here, but really, we're going to review this, this budget calendar. Hopefully, you all had a chance to look at it, I think I sent it over maybe 10 days ago, a draft, a few little things have changed. I'll just highlight a few things. One of those is the cost of living adjustment, so if we hit, let's just go look at that tab for a second, Deb, and make that a little bigger. So the practice that we have had for quite a while is to look at different indexes to determine what the cost of living adjustment could be. And over the last five or so years, we've been using what we call the CPI West Region, so when you think of the West Region, it's really pretty much just our neighbors, the states around us. We did use the total urban consumer average for quite a few years before that, but as you look at those, there's actually quite a bit of difference, you know, when you're comparing east coast, west coast, et cetera. And so we recommend using that CPI West Region, and as we looked at that, the change from January to January was 2.42%. If you look at the 10-year average of what we've adopted the last 10 years, it's been about 2.86. And so, and as you can see, as you look at the last few years, definitely much lower than some of those that we've had to approve over the last few years. So what, what financial impact does that give us? So I ran it based on the 25 budgeted numbers, can you make it just a little bigger? Oh, actually, I'll just look here, you're good. So, you know, we have, wages are about, that are affected by COLA are about $13.8 million. And so the total increase, if you adopt that, is approximately $335,000. And then the impact to the general fund, which is typically the hardest to balance, is about half of that, or about $171,000. And so that kind of just shows you the effect of what that 2.42 would be. And basically, if you guys are good with it, we would budget and then we would include that 2.42 in the numbers that we would look at through the budget process in those, those meetings, department meetings, et cetera. So, and if you have questions, just jump in. So let's jump back to the calendar. Another couple of things that are kind of big deals to think about is Percy has recommended, they actually had a rate change recommended for July of 2025, they deferred that to 2026, but that will affect a few months of our fiscal year '26. And then, as we met with our agent for health insurance, which is another big item, he recommended that we budget 7% increase. I've been looking at that, and I've been looking at what we have in reserve, because we've been trying to build up a reserve to potentially go self-funded. And based on the experience we're seeing, I, I believe that we can probably actually budget less than the 7%, so I'm going to do some more looking into that as I go through the payroll budget process, but I would anticipate that probably being anywhere from 3% to 5%, I think, when we're, when it's all said and done. His recommendation was the 7%, however.
I have a question, why do you think it'll be less than the 7%?
Because I, because we. Because I, because we have a pretty good experience, so we, looking at our experience so far, we're at about, I think it was eighty-five percent or eighty-seven percent, and that includes the admin fees, which is really good. And so I think we're going to have, uh, unless we see a lot of really bad months in a row, I think we're going to have a, the ability to negotiate pretty good on that. And then if I look at the reserve, we have actually built up the reserve pretty significantly over the last two years, because we, we didn't take rate increases, we switched insurance, and then we were supposed to take a twelve percent rate increase this year, and it was zero. We did take a little bit on dental. So as I look at that reserve, the other thing that we might be able to do is just, just potentially dip into that a little bit if we need to, so. Okay, um, the other big thing is April eleventh is the, we've, we've slated that as the council drive around, and so if there's specific things you want to see on that, get with Councilmember Walker, and, um, I think then they can get that on, and that's kind of an all-day thing from nine to three. And then on the department meetings, um, I sent you out a version of that. It's probably not going to work for everybody. Um, I tried to take the input that I got and really try to balance it the best I could that, so that you could be to the most possible based on your schedules, so. So if you're good with what I sent out, then I will start sending that out to the departments and see if there's other conflicts that we've got to work around, so. And then, um, public hearing, we would go ahead and do July sixteenth is the plan there. I probably should mention the June fourth. So last year, we kind of made it a little bit longer, but, um, do you guys, do you still feel good about four to six for a budget work meeting? So it gives us a couple, two to two hours and twenty minutes if we need it. So it just allows us to dive a little deeper, if you will.
An hour's not quite long enough.
Yeah, yeah. So we'll keep that then for four o'clock on June fourth, so. Okay, and then just to mention, uh, we will see what happens with how we do the utility rates. We're in the middle of just kind of starting that utility rate study, so timing-wise, I'm just not sure where we're going to end up with that. Um, so if we're prepared to go with the new rate study, great, we'll do that, but if we have to, we may have to just rely on the old process and then bring that new rate study in a few months later, so we'll watch that. Okay, any questions?
So do you need a motion on this?
Yeah, I think just a motion to accept that, that budget, uh, calendar.
I'm like, okay.
I'll make that motion to accept the budget calendar for this coming year.
Motion made by, yep, Councilmember Colin Erickson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Reese, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes.
Hey, thank you.
That's it, huh?
That's, oh, and then just to mention, um, we are going to make that, I'd sent out an email about going through the fiscal year twenty-four budget in a work meeting on a Friday, I can't remember which day in March, but fourteenth of March, we are going to make that a public meeting, so, so everybody's welcome to come to that if, if you can make it, so.
That's at noon, isn't it?
Yeah.
Keith, you're up.
Thanks, Council President Walker. Uh, so I've got a couple items. Uh, first off, we've got, uh, two bids that will be opening tomorrow, so we're looking for council's, uh, pre-authorization, uh, so we can move on that in a faster manner. Uh, one of the things is, well, the two items, and maybe we'll just take them one by one, what is the concrete manhole purchase? Well, actually not concrete, but they're going to be a epoxy aggregate, um, that way they withstand, um, the hydrogen sulfide gases that we're seeing down that line from Sugar City. Um, so that way it will protect those manholes and they'll have a, a longer lifespan on that. And then the other bid that we're looking at is just the actual installation and doing that, that sewer line coming from Sugar City on that, and so we're just seeking council's approval.
Do you want to explain to the council why we have to do it like this and why we're not coming with the bids?
Yeah, and so, um, yeah, the reason why we're wanting to move ahead like this is just timing-wise, as we look, as the groundwater is coming up, um, instead of pushing another two weeks after that bid, um, one of the requirements that, that kind of, we weren't aware of until later was a thirty-day advertisement, because this is, we're using federal funds on this project, and so we had to advertise it for thirty days, and so that extended our window on there, and so it pushed our bids just past this council meeting, we'll be opening it, opening those bids tomorrow. And so it'd just be our normal, we would look and, and make sure the low bidder, um, that everything matches our requirements with that. So it'd be a very similar thing that we would normally bring to council after we've opened the bids, uh, but because time is of, is of the essence on this one, uh, we're looking for preapproval for that low bid.
Just a con, or question, Mr. President, um, so do you have an estimate on what, my only concern would be is if the low bid came in, you know.
Yeah, if it comes really high, we're not going to proceed forward, right? We, we would have additional conversations on that. Um, and so with that, um, yeah, we're going to, we'll be watching that. If there, if there is any concern along those lines, we'll definitely push out something to council on that. I mean, we'll push it out anyway, so you guys know what the bids came in at.
Can we do this one motion, or do we need two motions?
Probably, probably two. I think we'd do two motions on that.
Okay, so we have an, I entertain a motion for authorize Keith to accept the low bid on the concrete manhole purchase.
Mr. President, I will, um, make that motion, that we authorize the powers to be, I don't know who, who we're authorizing.
Low bid.
Okay, we're authorizing to accept the low bid, uh, um, on the manhole covers, manhole.
Having a motion by Councilmember Erickson, do we have a second?
Question on that motion, do we want to put this stipulation on there if it's way high to just bring it back toward us, so it's on the motion?
You can do that, but I'll, I would bring it.
I will, but I just wonder if we want that on the motion.
Either way.
We, we trust you, Keith.
Okay, I'll second it then.
Seconded by the other Councilmember Erickson, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we entertain a motion for the, to authorize and do low, to award a low bid on the North Yellowstone Sanitary Sewer Project.
Uh, Mr. President, I will also move to authorize Keith or others to move forward with a low bid on the North Yellowstone Sanitary Sewer Project.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Eric Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Colin Erickson, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Okay, anything else?
Yeah, so the last item I have is, um, we are seeking to surplus, uh, water meters that we no longer need in our system, um, they don't match up with, as we move to doing radio reads on there, and so we're looking to surplus those water meters. We have about a hundred and twenty of the five eighth, five eighth inch meters and about twenty-two of the one-inch meters that we're getting.
Does anybody buy those?
Uh, so we do have some communities, I think New Dale might be interested in some of those, those meters, um, at least that's my understanding.
Okay, any questions for Keith on this? Okay, I entertain a motion to surplus these water meters.
I can make that motion, that we surplus the water meters.
Okay. A motion made by Councilmember Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chambers, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed.
Okay, anybody, anybody else have anything else for Keith?
Yes, I do. If, Keith, I have one question on, we talked several times about the light on University and South Highway, and I just happened to be out there twice this week. Do we have any timeframe of looking at getting things changed up there, so it's not just rotating around?
Yeah, doing, through that, so yeah, so Joel's been out there several times on there, we've originally thought it was a wire being pulled out, so now we're inspecting, going through those cameras to see what, what we have going on, why it's triggering back to what we call a max recall, right, where it just goes through every cycle, because if once, if you have a camera go down, it just kicks into that max recall, so everybody gets a chance to move, so we don't back up traffic. Now, other situations when the cam, cameras are blinded off, it doesn't do that, and so, um, but yeah, we are looking, looking into that. We also have a similar situation up by Moody and Second East, uh, those cameras have been going out, so we're trying to get some additional cameras in so we can fix that situation, so we, we can move traffic more efficiently at those intersections.
That'd be good, I just had several complaints from citizens when they go out there and we'll get through it.
I appreciate you bringing it up as we're, as we're moving through it, so definitely, thank you.
Good to bring back to them, so thank you.
Yeah.
And can I ask one question? Um, did you say if they found out why the light at the interchange today that I called you about, why that happened?
No, I haven't, I haven't heard, other than they're, they're looking, they've, they've had some, some problems with that, so they're looking into it. So our hope is, right, when we get the fiber ran to everything, right, that we can hopefully look at things quicker, right, because we'll be able to have access into those cabinets, into the computer systems, right, so we can look and see what's going on, and hopefully we can, if something like that is happening, we can trigger it to go into a max recall, right, to allow, so if we've got traffic backing up, instead of trying to get officers out there to direct traffic while that problem is happening, so.
What problem is that?
Oh, the light was red, it didn't turn, I was there for fifteen minutes.
Where was this at?
Heading east by Valleywide on the west side of Highway twenty. I, it was a disaster this morning at eight AM, because people were trying to get into campus and other things, and it was just red, so.
Yeah, it does make it challenging.
Oh, it was pretty bad.
Absolutely. Um, one other thing to just bring everyone's attention, so with the, the change, obviously in the federal administration, um, there's different grants that are under review, uh, to see if it meets the current executive orders, and so one of those grants is one that we received, the reconnecting communities, the two million dollar grant, so right now that grant is on hold. So until they figure out, um, if it meets that executive order decisions, and we'll, we'll know probably thirty to forty-five days, um, what, what direction we need to head with that grant. And so I can, I'll, I'll give you an update when we get an update on it. We, we spoke with, um, a guy who's kind of over that grant for our area, we spoke with him, uh, just the other day.
That's the one that's looking at the east-west connectors?
Yes, yep.
And we haven't committed any?
No, no, there's no committed funds or anything like that, so, yeah, that had a, it was two million dollar, we had a five hundred thousand dollar match.
And do you know about our little grants, like for the trails? Do you know if they're going to be impacted yet or anything?
Um, no, I think the tree one that we received, I think that one's under review as well, um, but I haven't heard on the, on the smaller ones, so.
Hey, anything else for Keith? Thank you, Keith.
Thanks. Thank you.
And I have items for consideration, first one is planning and zoning recommendation, recommendation to approve a rezone at four west Moody Road from light industrial to medium density residential two, as it stands ordinance number thirteen twenty-eight, consider it first read. Just explaining to the high school kids, students here, when, when we do ordinances or laws, we have to, they have to be read three times, so that goes through three meetings, because that's why government moves so slow. So we'll have a first reading tonight, and we'll have, we'll read it again on our first meeting in March, and then we'll read it a third time in our second meeting in March, and then it'll become law or ordinance, whatever it is. Anyway, so that's how we do it, so tonight these, we have two that we're going to do on first reading. So we'll turn time over to Alan Parkinson.
Councilmember President, thank you, counsel. Uh, the property is located just west of that, owned by the church where the new temple is going. It was, uh, zoned light industrial, I believe, seven, eight years ago, it was just prior to me starting that they did this. At that point, they thought that there was going to be more industry, industry coming in there at that point, and that's what they wanted to do. With the current project going on, they feel that this would be a lot better with housing, and that is the proposal they're looking to, is moving this from the light industrial into medium density residential two. This fits within the comprehensive plan that we had made those changes, so we don't need to change that, and this is kind of what we're feeling will, will work in that area. The developer is asking that, we reviewed it, um, it meets all the requirements, they do understand that they have to have that new sewer line in before we can service it, so they have been made aware of that stipulation, so keep that in mind with it, we're planning that in the future to meet that, and they're aware of it also. So planning and zoning, we had that public hearing with them, um, no opposition to it at all, and presented to them, and they are recommending it to you for approval. Any questions you guys would have?
Any questions for Alan?
Just real quick, it, it matches the zoning, um, to the left of it, or to the, what would that direction be, west?
No.
Okay, so it doesn't match the zoning, but it does meet the comprehensive.
The comprehensive plan of what we do. We do have a parcel a little bit further west, there's one in between them, the transitional lag is next to them, the next one is medium density residential one, further west.
Okay.
So it's falling within what we anticipate happening in that area. Here's a map of it.
Alan, um, and I know there was some discussion in planning and zoning, and I know we don't, we don't discuss what the developer's plans are for the, for the property, but, um, there's, there's a sign out there now.
Correct.
Uh, that, um, and, and there was some discussion of planning and zoning about the, um, the homestead moving out there. So we'll get a chance to take a look at the plat and everything when that comes forward to us, right?
This one, you're going to see a lot split at this point, possibly a short plat for what they're planning, because it's going to be a one large project, they'll own the whole thing, so there won't be a full plat that will come in front of you. So they, they develop that way. Um, but I would advise you that your decision needs to be made on the maximum potential that could go in here, not what we have been told is going in. Plans change, things happen, we always advise that, unless you're seeing a planned unit development, where then they're presenting something that you're approving the whole project, and you can see what's going in, and that's what they're asking for specifically. But in these, we don't. But yes, the sign is already up out there of what they're proposing.
Can I ask a question? Okay, let's see if I can remember it right, it's from when I listened to planning and zoning, the residents, one of the residents that lives behind there, um, was asking how close it would be to her property and things like that, and then, um, someone said maybe the developer, that if it did turn into apartments, um, something about requesting, like, single family, close to the, so that it wasn't just this huge jump. But how do we have that ability? If we change that zone, we don't have that ability to do that?
No, you don't.
Okay, so why do we tell that? I was confused why we told that woman that in the.
We didn't, the developer told her that, so that didn't come from.
Did it get corrected to her, so she understood at some point?
Yes, they had a discussion within the room, talking about it, and the developer promised her that he would make sure it was in any contract or anything he did, that that requirement would be met. But that's between them, not us.
Yeah, and honestly, it, it probably wasn't appropriate for that meeting, but I'm new, and I don't like to interrupt people all that much, but, uh, if you go back in the minutes, and that's where it's, uh, it's Haley, and, and I've beat him over the head with it for five years, and, and he's pretty good at, uh, he has a blurb, specifically when we get into those, uh, those types of projects, because sometimes they're dependent on HUD funding, and so I'm not, I'm not talking specifically about that one, but we've had other, uh, projects like that, that will move locations two and three times. And so that's why it's very important to just, uh, make decisions based on what could go into that zone and not necessarily the project. It's hard when they want to talk about it, it's hard when they put up a sign, uh, but it's kind of the way that we have to operate, because at any moment they could sell it, and then they could sell it, and then that same individual who was there at the meeting and was given assurances, you know, those assurance, that person probably isn't bound by those assurances, and so, uh, you know, I thought it was a cordial conversation, I thought it was, uh, it was something where, uh, he had made some assurances, but again, it's, it's, there's no legal authority, uh, given from the city to act on that, so.
So, but that makes it so hard, because we heard that, but then if it was apartments, I would, I would feel differently, it's just, it's just hard. Why did they get to put the sign up before the zone change and everything? I don't understand.
Anybody can hang a sign, we, as long as they have permission from a landowner, that doesn't lock you into any decision, it doesn't lock them into any decision. doesn't lock you into any decision, it doesn't lock them into any decision in that type of a deal. That's why, again, we need to ignore what's coming and look at it, does this fit the area? Number one, we are meeting the comprehensive plan and what we want to see in that area, what we see the future growth to be. And I anticipate you're going to see some major changes on the church property before long. And so if that comes in, you may see stuff happening there that follows along that. And we're trying to do that step down. If commercial goes along Second East, then you come from the commercial into some higher density to medium, and then down into maybe even low density later on. So all of this area was listed as intermediate.
So, so if you could just review for us quickly, the, what, what is the maximum density in MDR two?
Twenty, 20 units per acre.
Twenty per acre, so.
Tell them what they can do right now.
Right, none, under light industrial, they can put in 60-foot-high buildings, commercial, not even commercial, we're talking almost shops.
Yeah.
So that's what she's facing versus housing. And that, that's an allowed use right now with what he has.
And how close was it? I meant to go drive out there, because I'm just not very good with maps.
It's right at the edge of the.
But it's right by the house.
Yes, you can see it right there.
So why do we have step downs for medium density, but not for light industrial then?
Well, this, the light industrial was done way back when they anticipate all of this was going to go commercial light industrial. And now he's realized that's not a feasible place to put light industrial. He wants to switch that zoning to residential, because it fits better today.
Any more questions?
Real quick, and this is a small thing, we keep talking about meeting the comprehensive plan, the official legal term is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, and the courts like that term, which is a very small thing, but I'd like to contribute to the meeting more than just crying and mumbling about things.
We like the crying.
We're glad you're here, Spencer.
Are you, are you saying that because it's a living document, and we don't have to, like, what's your odd specifying that? Is it? Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's the official legal term. And so, meeting the comprehensive plan is legally a different term than in accordance with. And so, and there's different, we could go through that. Very similar, but it is different. That's what attorneys do sometimes, and it's annoying, where words matter. And it's annoying, but, you know, you'll get 10 people, and you'll argue about what the word means, whether it's, you know, in accordance with or meeting and, and things like that. And so, if anything, though, we just like to keep the record clean with using the exact verbiage. Courts appreciate it sometimes, because when you're using the exact terms, sometimes they look at it, judges don't like to read pages and pages of notes. And I've talked with judges before, when they see that you're using correct language, they assume that you're following the statutes and you understand what's going on. And, and it's just the reality that we live in sometimes.
Thank you. Okay, so I undertake a motion that we, on this, approving the, I need a motion on the rezoning of 4th West Moody Road.
Mr. President, I move that we approve ordinance number 1328 and consider it first read.
I have a motion by Councilmember Chambers, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Colin Erickson. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that one passes. Consider it first read. Who's doing the next one? Selection of Altra as grant administrator for the tabernacle improvements. Resolution number 25, 2025-02.
Yeah, so I, introduction, I am Tacey Stoddard from Altra Community Consulting. A little background, because I don't know if, how much you guys know about what we have been working with Matt Nielsen and, and Scott Johnson a little bit. We were asked back in, we met with them back in January, Matt and Scott, about doing a grant application through the Idaho Department of Commerce block grant program. They have block grants for community or senior centers or community centers. And we felt like some of the work that you guys have been looking at doing for the tabernacle would be a good fit for the community center grant. And so we met with them, and, and one of the upcoming projects that they're, you guys are looking at is for the HVAC, to, to upgrade that and replace it. And so there's $245,000 that we're trying to, we're going to apply for, for the city to be able to help with funding that part of the project. So, so that's why I'm here tonight, is to take care of a couple items that we need to do for the application and, that are required by the application, and just to, to keep that moving forward. The applications are due on March 7th, and we've already been working with Matt to get gathering information and, and starting to work on that. And so there's like three different things that we kind of need to have from, from the council. One of which, these might be kind of out of order from what's on here, but probably the first thing is, we do have a little development contract, it's, and it's probably in their packets, right? For $3,000 for us to work on this and, and help work with the city employees to get, and staff to get that all put together and ready to submit. And so we have that grant contract that we need approved. Then the other item is, as part to get some of the points for the grant, in the grant application, you actually, before you even submit it, you have to select a certified grant administrator for the project, and, and it gets you more points in the, in the grant. So, under the small, micro, or well, I shouldn't say small purchase, micro purchase procedure, if it's less than, if the contract will be less than $25,000, you guys can select based on best value. And so that's, that's how you, how you can just, if you choose to select us tonight, and that would be, we would become the grant administrators if you, if you do receive the grant. That's how that, that works. And then the other item is the resolution that you have, which is just an authorizing resolution for you guys to approve that, to submit the grant and to authorize the mayor to sign any of the related documents that we would need to have signed before we submit that. So if, and, yeah, any questions at all?
Just a quick question, what, do you anticipate what the, what the amount of this grant might, might be?
It would be the, we are applying for the full 245,000.
Okay.
I had a question, the $3,000, is that just to get the grant ready and submit? That doesn't include administering the grant once it's received?
No, no, we, yeah, it doesn't include administering the grant, that would, that contract would come later if, if you're awarded the grant.
I'm so sorry, I've been having trouble with my packets, so I couldn't get this to load. So you're saying, so it's $3,000? But then if we are awarded the grant, but we don't know how much money it would cost us to have the grant administered?
Usually it's with, with the, with these grants, they don't allow more than like 10% for grant administration, so it would be, it would be like 24 fives, because it's 245,000. That's how much the, the grant administration contract would be.
And isn't this already in the budget?
So we have, I believe it was 350, if I remember right, in the budget, and we have been saving for this, we've got a couple hundred thousand dollars saved up in that fund. But as we have looked at this, we've been working directly, the historical building committee has been working with Gate City, I believe it is, and they, and we've also been working with JRW. So JRW's been working on the, the remodel of that building as we try to phase out these improvements, as money becomes available. And then with that, we had to then go back to the HVAC, right? And also included in that is a power guy and a plumbing guy, and get their estimates. And we are actually seeing the estimates coming back closer in the 700 range. And so that is why we looked at this grant, to try to get that. We are still working on things, we're hopeful that we can get that grant priced down. We're trying to, to get a system that's not quite that expensive, I guess you could say. And, and we did get an estimate, probably been three years now, and it was more in the 200 to 300 range. But we've changed things enough that the prices went up, and one of the major changes has been to basically open up those windows in the basement, so that the light comes down through into that gathering area. And, because right now, they're all blocked by where the, the chases run or the vents run. And so, so that's part of it. And then just as you look at trying to build that out in the future, you, you've got to account for those changes as well. And so, so unfortunately, yeah, it's coming back at a higher cost.
Just one more question, and so it's a federal grant?
It's, it's, it's HUD money that comes through the state of Idaho, through the Idaho, through Idaho Department of Commerce. So as of right now, this is, it is, should be okay, we're hoping. And we haven't heard anything that we can't apply, because they're holding the funds, because it's already been appropriated to the state, so.
So can we do the solid one motion? Need a motion for each one?
I think maybe the, at least the, maybe the, selecting us as the grant administrator, because I have to send the minutes in that show you specifically selected us as the grant administrator for the points, maybe just that one separate from the rest. And then also, Deborah reminded me, we, we also need to, we have to have a public hearing for, for this grant, and we are, if, just to prove, you know, that we set that public hearing for your next meeting at 6:30.
So should we set public hearing?
I would accept.
Probably we should select the grant administrator. Have a reservation and set a public hearing.
Okay, so I undertake a motion that we, we accept Altra as the grant administrator for the tabernacle improvements.
Mr. President, I move that we accept Altra as the grant administrator for this particular grant.
Okay. Now, motion made by Councilmember Reese, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Eric Erickson. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. So then we need to do one for, let me, we'll, see.
Resolution.
Resolution for authorizing, okay, it's the middle of the grant.
So, Mr. President, I move that we, that we authorize the resolution, resolution number 2025-02 for the submittal of the ICB grant.
And set a public hearing.
And set a public hearing for March 5th.
Does that need to include the development contract?
No, you can do that one after, I think.
I'll second the motion.
You got a, you got a motion and a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Is that it? Do we need to do any more?
Just the contract, the.
Approve the contract.
Development contract.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the development contract with Altra's for $3,000.
Okay. Don't offend me like that ever again, call me Mr. Mayor, I'm just joking.
Oh, did I say mayor? Mr. President.
Just joking. Motion made by Councilmember Chambers, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Reese, or any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got that done.
Okay, well, I'll see you in a couple weeks, the public hearing, and thank you. We're excited to work on another great project with the city.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have no second readings, we have one third reading on the ordinance number 1327, annexation of enclaved properties located approximately 1076 West Main Street, 5th West, and University Boulevard and Eagle Park into the city of Rexburg. Do I have a motion to consider this ordinance third read?
I'll make that motion, this ordinance 1327, third read.
Motion made by Councilmember Colin Erickson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Johnson. Any more, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Third read. Then we have a consent calendar, which includes minutes of the February 5th, 2025 meeting, and approval of the payment of the city Rexburg bills. Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the consent calendar, including the minutes for our last meeting, and pay the bills.
Okay, have a motion by Councilmember Eric Erickson, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Colin Erickson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's done. Okay, I think that's it. If anybody has anything else, just remember on the drive around, if you have any, any things you want to see, just let me know, we'll get it worked in, so. Okay, thank you all for coming, and Spencer, I hope your first council meeting wasn't too bad. Appreciate you being here. I'm Lee Stanadurn.